So, do you have an order that you want to make? Do you have an order to make?
Um, let me, yeah.
Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the zoning Board of Appeals, April 2017 meeting. Please stand forward. Please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. To the House of Representatives, the United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia's stands, and one nation, and we got into this for the review of the justice.
And just for the record, there was no March meeting proposed from the Department of Public Affairs. Hold on, please.
Ms. Brantick has advised that she would want to stand with him. Um, Mr. Chisola?
Here.
Mr. Fasino?
Here.
Mr. Gander?
Here.
Mr. Soma?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Happy?
Here.
Also, President Steven Harris, our zoning officer, making a recording, secretary. Um, will you feel like this evening for Ms. Brantick?
Yep, sure.
If anyone feels that there is a conflict of interest with their application for anyone on this board, please let us know. Okay, item number one, six. Item number three. Sure. Um, quick note for all attendants here tonight. Item, agenda, item number three, which is the light streak has actually been postponed until next month. So, our first item on the agenda tonight is item number one. Six twenty-two, six twenty-four, six twenty-six, Gulf Street, MPB twenty-eight slash five-twenty slash twenty-six, in an R eighteen zone. Kevin Crusade and Esquire returning for GH Ward and successors owner. Section of the zoning regulations proposed for variance. Proposed lot one. Vary section two dot five dot four to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section three dot one dot one dot one to allow two single-family detached residents on one lot. Vary section two dot five dot five, access width frontage to ten feet or twenty-five feet required. Vary section three dot one dot four, side yard setback to six feet or fifteen required. Proposed lot two. Vary section two dot five dot four to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section two dot five dot five, access width frontage to ten feet or twenty-five required. Lot that may not be considered generally rectangular in shape.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Crusade. My office is at twenty-six Cherry Street, here in Wilford. With me tonight is Mr. Ward, the applicant and owner of the property. I, uh, we've had two hearings on this. I just thought I would bring the presentation again in case there's any questions because we missed the March meeting. I think we left it off in February, uh, where, um, the board was looking open for additional considerations or information. Uh, we, I don't have any real new information, um, other than there's a, there's a couple of points I wanted to make. Number one, we granted the extension of time, uh, after the March meeting because we were going to run out of time on the public hearing. So, we had, we had granted that, uh, through Meg Green and Steven Harris, uh, back at that time when that meeting was canceled. The, one of the points I wanted to make, um, that had come up last month was the one driveway access. And I know, uh, just for clarification, there's a difference between the drive, a shared driveway and a twenty-five foot wide accessway that we're asking you to vary. And we had asked for a very, a variance for ten feet down from twenty-five feet for the, uh, rear access to the parcel. And it had come up at the, the second, uh, part of the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Harris's position was that it's supposed to be one driveway or one accessway per lot. And that, uh, I looked at the minutes and then watched, um, the meeting from, from February, and it was kind of focused on the driveway. Uh, since then, I've done a little bit of, um, research, and I'll just, uh, try to scroll through these. That says the property again for general dealing, that's the successors, uh, GIS overview of the property. That's what we're proposing. Uh, but I wanted to also highlight, highlight the number of neighbors in support. I think that cuts it off. I think it's actually like twelve or thirteen. And I had made the comment, and I just want to reemphasize it because it's so, it's so unusual. Uh, usually, if you're presenting a variance application, if you have nobody show up in opposition to it, that means the neighbors tacitly consent. At least, that's my personal experience. Um, in this case, we had people proactively showing up at the public hearings, and we had many people write letters, all adjoining neighbors. I highlighted the areas, uh, that's the, the big parcel in the middle is, uh, Mr. Ward's property. Uh, the rest of those are the neighbors that have given, uh, their affirmative approval of the project and support of the project. If you bear with me just a minute. So, what I wanted to do... Yeah, all of these are in the record, and whatever else is additional, uh, will go on the record tonight. So, the reason for this map, it's not to confuse anybody, this is a map from, uh, West Buckland Road, and these are rear lots in the back. You know, it's not part of this application, obviously. These are two rear lots in the back. They also have the designated twenty-five foot wide accessways. Uh, it looks like apparently per lot, I don't know, I didn't research the actual approval. However, that's one driveway. So, that's one driveway. So, the point being is that these, this twenty-foot wide accessway per rear lot, in a lot of cases, is really just a, uh, a paper, uh, not a paper road, but a paper accessway that's just meant to, uh, meet the letter, or how the city of Wilford has interpreted the letter of the regulation, not really the intent of the regulation, which I think is probably, or, or what I believe Mr. Harris's position was. This is just the GIS of that same property. You can see how the properties are separated, so it almost looks like they have two driveways, but that's one driveway. That's over on West Buckland. This is another one that's actually Wolf Harbor Road. Um, I looked into this, that the subdivision maps weren't really clear. I think there are at least two twenty-five foot wide access strips, but there's two or three lots back there, and that's clearly one driveway. Forest Road, there's one driveway leading back to eighty, eighty-fourth Road and eighty-two Forest Road, with one twenty-five foot wide access strip, it looks like. Is it total? Maybe somebody, maybe somebody worked on the project from the GIS map, it looks like one, so, I don't know. Here's another property on Ford Street that I think just developed over time, where you can see the twenty-foot, twenty-five foot, or whatever that is, accessway with, uh, several driveways off, several driveways with houses, but the actual approach driveway is one driveway. So, the point I'm trying to make is that there's a lot of talk about, um, whether you can have one driveway, whether it could be a shared driveway with this twenty-five foot wide accessway. I think in some cases, these subdivisions for these rear lots, the plans are drafted or tortured in such a way that they're just showing the twenty-five foot wide accessway, um, but they still use the shared driveway. So, I don't think that this meeting, um, and those are, a lot of those, those are plans that went through, uh, which is a slight point in subdivision approval, they didn't request a variance on it. So, the variance we're asking for, um, number one, I still don't think Mr. Harris's interpretation is correct of that regulation, but number two, in practical terms, what you end up with at the end of the development is one shared driveway and maybe some paper accessways that just are funky and some probable impact value of the lots on whether you have a setback or whether you put fence or a pool or something like that. That's the, uh, point I wanted to make on that. And Mr. Ward, uh, he's got, if it's okay with the board, he's just going to say a few words, and I think there might be some neighbors here tonight to, uh, say some words in support again. Um, but briefly, Mr. Ward's intention is to preserve this property generally in the manner it is now, and he thinks that by, uh, having this approved, uh, having the other lot back there, he'd be able to, uh, preserve it for when he either sells the property or he moves on. So, at this time, Mr. Ward?
Mr. Crusade, I just have a question for you.
Yes, yes.
Can you make the, you cannot, can you also enter the property from the Gulf Street side?
Yeah, there's another, there's another access from the Gulf Street side, but it's also about, uh, twenty-five feet, it's twelve feet wide. Got it.
We've listened to, uh, what your board has said, and we try to make adjustments to the plan, taking into your wishes and the neighbors' wishes. Our neighbors love this plan. They've all given you letters of support, with what was coming personally, on many occasions due to pretty rough weather, uh, to speak in favor of it. The plan leaves the property open and unoccupied. From one lot to two houses, to go forty-seven thousand square feet in an R eighteen zone, that would require just thirty-six thousand square feet for two houses, so we have an excess of ten thousand square feet, leaving a basic rectangle shape that the board prefers. As far as the driveway goes, it's been used since the late eighteen hundreds. It served two houses, and one house served three, but one of my houses in the nineteen eighties burned out. There's never been a problem, as I mentioned before, in the driveway that I go up since at least nineteen fifty-four. There's been parties, there's been weddings, there's been high school reunions, well over two, three hundred people. There's been construction equipment, there's been service equipment, there's been emergency equipment. There's never been one problem whatsoever. The neighbors that live along the driveway, the Newleys, the Toppers, the Gossnuskes, are all very much in favor of this plan, like it very much, and have to come to speak in favor of it. We, I would like to see the property straightened out while I'm still here, to prevent further development. I've nurtured this property since nineteen sixty-five, and I, my neighbor, would like to see it like whole, rather than growth of the building. So, I'm asking for it, but I will, uh, honor the plan and represent my verities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the only other comment I would make is, there was a comment, a concern from the board, uh, over here in February, that, um, the board couldn't, you know, grant something like this because it was illegal, but I just want to highlight that that's exactly what this board is in place for, uh, is for people asking for variance to leave from the regulations. And just, um, specifically, for example, the board granted a variance on a rear lot in August, I think of twenty sixteen, eleven ninety-one, in Avon Avenue. It wasn't a number of variances, but it was a variance, I think, for either lot width or, I think it was the width of the lot. So, this is fully within your power to grant that. So, if you've heard, um, comments from staff or other, uh, other avenues that, uh, you can't grant this, and this is illegal, that is completely inaccurate, it's solely within your power to grant it if you've either found a hardship, which we went over, and it's in the record, and I'm not going to bore everyone with that again, or in the case of, uh, there is a reduction in nonconformity, which can take the place of hardship, and the reduction in nonconformity is reducing three lots on, three houses on one big lot, um, to try to spread that out and have, uh, less of a nonconformity with single houses and single lots, except in one case with the existing houses in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Crusade, I really have just a few questions.
You have a question?
Yes, Attorney Crusade, I don't have my survey here, that they put in our file, but, uh, what was the total weight of each of them?
I think it's, uh, three point oh one, I think.
So, each one of these three lots, all of them open, correct?
Yes, that was based on your concerns with the original.
And what's the elevation, right in front of Mr. Ward's house? What's, you know what the elevation of Gulf Street is versus the top of the property? Was that a twenty foot difference?
It's actually about eighteen feet. I think it's eight feet, and then the top of the, where his house sits, is thirty feet. So, I think, I think Gulf Street there...
So, eighteen to thirty, twelve foot difference?
The, I can tell you right now. Finished floor of house number six point two, which is on Gulf Street, is at thirty point eight feet. Gulf Street is at elevation eight feet in front of the house. Eight feet, yeah. So, it's almost six point eight foot. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we've, we've had this hearing before, and, um, there's no reason for anyone else to come up, so, let's hear it. If you have questions, commit to Mr. Crusade.
Mr. Crusade, do you have two five five? I think I saw you scroll through.
Uh, yeah.
Do you mind just, uh, pulling up? Now, I've probably read this about fifty times by myself, um, and I apologize, it's only my second meeting, but I read the, the plain language of that regulation just to mean that you need a accessway, not necessarily separate accessways. Is there any case law at over forty where you get this separate accessway department?
Um, no. The research that I've done, I don't think that any court has interpreted this particular regulation for Wilford. They have, uh, you know, six four, six one four two, and some other regulations, but not this particular regulation that I could, that I could recall.
And I know it's not your position, um, maybe Mr. Harris could address it for you. Where does the separate accessway come in through that regulation? Meaning, how is it read into that regulation? You may just say, I don't know, because I take the other side, but what I'm getting at is, is there, is there any, any other definition, or where, where exactly does it come from?
Well, I don't, I don't read it into that regulation. I think historically, and that's why you have those lots I showed earlier, that's been the interpretation, and I, I think the intention was probably for separate actual acts, you know, driveways, not just paper accessways. So, I don't, I, I don't read it in there. I can tell you the history that I went over, uh, earlier of this regulation, where originally it was much, much more restricted, required two acre lots, required fifty-foot accessways, and, and that was in, uh, nineteen sixty-eight. It was changed in seventy-six, and now it's basically the same since, as it was in seventy-six, but in sixty-eight, it had much more restrictive requirements, and it also required exclusive, uh, easements for, you know, fee simple, meaning that you had to own that accessway yourself to refer it to count. In seventy-six, that requirement was removed. So, to me, it's an evolving, it's evolving away from a more restrictive regulation to a more permissive regulation, and it doesn't even say, uh, private access, it doesn't say exclusive easement or, uh, a deed in fee simple, because that was a conversation at the very first hearing, was that these had to be owned solely by the person, this one's actually shared by several neighbors. So, and to me, that's even further evidence, not direct evidence, but it's further evidence that that, that's not what the intention, that's, if that's the intention of this regulation, that's not what it says.
Thank you. All right, now, now, is there anyone else speaking on this?
Uh, this is Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Picking up on what I'm trying to receive inside, if you look at the language of section two point five point five, it reads, so we're sort of in the middle, says one, single-family dwelling can be developed as a rear lot unless private means of access. Uh, I think that language is clear that your one, single-family, uh, dwelling has a private means of access. If you have a second, uh, a second rear lot, that second rear lot also has to have private means of access. Um, and the board shouldn't confuse a subdivision with private road with a rear lot. Rear lot is very different from a subdivision with a private road. So, it's kind of, basically a private driveway that they maintain, uh, they, it's not built to city standards, uh, the city doesn't accept it as a street, but it serves as a road to several different lots, usually, usually dead-end streets. That's, that would be a subdivision with a private road. Private means of access is the term used for rear lot, and the language two five five, I think, is pretty clear, where it says, uh, one single-family dwelling can be developed as a private means of access. So, it's a logical saying that if you have more than one, more than one dwelling, you have to have more than one private means of access, or the word private means nothing at all. Private means exclusive, it doesn't mean for... That's one thing. The second thing that, um, Chairman received touched upon was your authority to grant variances. And I'd like to remind the board that your own regulations in section nine point two point two, uh, nine point two point one, nine point two point two, and so forth, all the other, and then point four. You should be afforded to grant variance for a lot, the presumption is, you know, you don't have a lot until it's been created. So, if someone's proposing something, they draw the map, those are proposed lots, they're not created lots. They don't exist. They, they just, some land records, they don't have an address, they don't have a map or a parcel, and they don't have any facts, they don't exist. So, my advice, my opinion to this board is that your regulations don't give you the authority to grant variance for a proposed lot, only for lots of debt, and I think the general statutes back that up, and general statutes talk about, uh, the boards, zoning boards of appeals, can grant, uh, variance for parcels. You know, again, the presumption is parcels are correct, not proposed. But, so, I'd like to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Harris, could you look at, um, let's see, it's nine point, nine point three point one one, number two, says no division of a lot, reduction in lot size, reduction in lot width, or relocation of condo lots shall be considered by the zoning board of appeals unless a certified plot owner is suspended the application. So, that, doesn't that mean you can create a lot?
No, the board has no authority to create a lot, only the planning board has the statute authority to create lots. That regulation, um, is under review right now. There's a lot of regulations in this area that are under review. All section nine is also under review, but, um, state statutes are pretty clear, is you couldn't create a lot as the planning is only board of, only the zoning board of appeals. Your only charge is to hear appeals of orders, decisions, uh, that I made, or to grant variances for lots directly. That's, that's your liability.
Well, I'm going to interpret that this way, so, I mean, it's your interpretation, it's my interpretation, but I think, I think it can be done.
Well, my interpretation, I guess, well, with respect, if it's backed up, I say a lot, which gives the planning of the zoning board the sole authority to create a lot.
Thank you. Just to interject for a moment, what we're asking the board to do is not create a lot by your action, because that is a function of applying its own board with the subdivision regulations. What we're asking the board to do is grant a variance so we can apply for a subdivision application. And there's been, it's not every week, but there's been many occasions where a lot is undersized, and you have to come and get a variance before you can go get a site plan approval, or, or before it's actually considered a valid lot. So, there is a disagreement respectfully, again, you have the ability to grant these variances. There's also an existing lot there now, uh, where you're granting variances off of that existing lot as well. And just one other point, Black's Law Dictionary defines private as infecting or belonging to private individuals as distinct from the public generally. So, private, and this private means of access means it's not a public street or, uh, that's what, that's what that means.
Okay. Anyone else speaking on this? That we've asked for acquisition before. Acquisition, any folks thinking, sir, what would you like to say?
My name is Joe, I live at six fifty Gulf Street, I'm in one of the adjacent lots. I came here to represent myself in that I consider Georgia's climate the best way to protect the value of my property. I've lived up there for about twenty years, my taxes are about three thousand a month, and I'm acutely aware of what could possibly happen, and I've seen it happen in passing, a piece gets torn apart, or gets certain privileges based on either federal or state laws or what they put by law. This is a big parcel of mine, if there was levels, what could go in there? I consider this a important decision to protect the investment that we made in that community. And, uh, once again, I'm an attorney, I came in here with exactly the same thought that the attorney presented. This is such a unique situation, how could anyone anticipate this combination of permutations that we have of sizes and shapes out there? That's the reason why we need you guys to look at it and say, what makes sense for that neighborhood in this town? And the neighbors all think it makes sense to what, what Georgia's trying to do to preserve that, that parcel of mine, which again, is a very large parcel, to protect our investment. So, that's my feeling.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before closing here?
My name is Johnny Grant, live in thirty sixteen East Icarus. I also love Georgia's property, and, um, my feeling is, as far as, uh, a morning for a lot with former house, it's not, density is going to be an issue, and as far as the driveway, um, I've lived there for seventeen years, and, um, I'm going to share this driveway, but I've never seen any issues there. Like, just, uh, already up there, it's been construction, new house built there recently, um, under control.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ward, you have any questions before closing, before we have our discussion? No? Okay, this hearing's over. Okay, any other thoughts? You are the zoning board of appeals.
All right, well, glad we waited, I just get to sleep on everything, because, you know, I did a lot of thinking on it, and, you know, we did ask them to, to make the lots and comply to that. And then I was looking at the variances here, and it just says, "To vary the certain application requirements of these regulations in case of irregular, narrow, shallow, or steep lot or other physical conditions." And then you look at the property, it's twenty-two feet over Gulf Street, you can't get a legal driveway if you go straight, because I think Wilford's, um, driveway rate is ten percent a, I think, though, like, you go to twelve percent, but you have a twenty, twenty-five percent rate on the driveway, so it's a safety factor, so you can't get a driveway through the street. It's an irregular piece of property. And, so really, you're asking for a few variances for the setbacks of the existing houses, and you're asking for the driveway, and I feel all the neighbors who live up here, they've had parties, they've had weddings, they've had everything up there, and we're just complaining about it, so I personally don't have a problem with this.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Oh, I don't have a problem either. I think it satisfies all the necessary variance requirements, but in addition, I bet on planning and zoning, and I know what could happen, um, to the property and to the neighbors should the variance be denied. Um, you know, the applicant hasn't threatened on that, and, uh, that's to his credit, but who knows what's going to happen if he no longer owns the property? So, again, I think it satisfies the variance requirements, I don't really care technically how we get there, but I think, um, given the fact that all the neighbors are in support, um, I'd be in favor of granting all the variances.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chris, very important points. Anyone else? Well, you had mentioned that most of the neighbors are in favor of this thing, uh, you know, it has to be...
You know, it has to start somewhere. It is a proposed lot, proposed variance. I think moving forward with it, you know, starting with the planning and zoning board. I think we have to start somewhere. We need a motion. I think a motion will prove it. I second the motion. Mr. Seaman, just there are a few reasons.
Based on the irregular shape of the lot, the topography of the lot, the steepness, the narrowness of the accessway, which can't be made any bigger, so I think there is still. On the right there.
We motion approve and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois, with the motion. Mr. Vasina?
With the motion.
Mr. Seaman?
With the motion.
The motion is approved.
Item number two, 36 Roselle Street, has been postponed. So, we will move on to item number four. As you recall, item number three is also postponed. Item number four, 148 Clark Street, MPP 83, 305 slash one, CDD dash one. Devin Ward, owner, varies Section 3 dot 16 dot 4 dot 2, colon 2, front yard setback to accessory structure to nine feet where 20 required. 4 dot 1 dot 7 dot 1, fence height in front yard to six feet where 3 feet permitted.
Good evening, chair and board members, members of the board. For the record, my name is Devin Ward. I am the owner of 148 Clark Street, Wilford. And this is my son, Stephen Ward.
Hello, I'm Stephen Ward, 148 Clark Street.
You both can be speaking on this, sir.
Mostly I'm going to read this. This cat slot, map 53, while 305 parcel one is located in the corridor design development district one, CDD one zone. This is an irregularly shaped lot in which there are essentially three front yards and one backyard. Minimum front yard setback in the CDD one zone is 20 feet from the property line. On December 11, 2007, a special exceptions permit was granted to us to keep goats and chickens. This allowed us to use our property as a family farm. In addition to the livestock, we were given permission in February of 2014 through emails with Emily and Harrigan, Stephen Harris, and David Sulkis to keep honeybee hives, which are registered with the State Connecticut and are filed at the town planning office. We are here before you today to request your parents to construct an accessory building nine feet where 20 feet is required. This building is going to be used in conjunction to our family farming activities. Also, to construct a six-foot-high fence where three feet is required. This additional accessory building is clearly subordinate customarily incidental to the foregoing special use that we were granted as a family farm for this property. Plans to use this building are for farming activities. The location position of this building was chosen due to the need of loading and unloading from the driveway. The higher fence will help with the safety and privacy that we need due to the development of the surrounding area. Livestock are not safe due to the constant destruction, destruction, excuse me, from passersby. On a daily basis, there are at least five passersby that stop and call to the animals, causing them to start leaping and jumping around. My existing fence has been damaged due to the passersby. I feel that this higher fence would give us the privacy of order and the protection and safety from my family farm going forward. The hardship due to this irregular shape and the fact that we have three front yards makes it difficult to make use of the space on the lot. Therefore, we are asking for approval of these variances. Please consider our situation in making your decision tonight. Thank you.
What type of fence are you proposing? And where would it start from, in front of the property?
The fence is proposed to start from a point on my driveway and go around the back of my property, which is the only part of my property that's considered a backyard, which is butted up to a dentist's office, and come around on the Clark Street side to where the fence where the gate ends.
Okay, what kind of fence is it?
We're planning on putting up a six-foot, four-inch-wide plank fence with... How about...
So, you'll still be able to...
A bit. Not as wide as it is now.
Okay, so that's one of the variances. The other one is for the addition.
An accessory building?
Yeah, there's an accessory building at the backside of the property. A shed eight by sixteen. Is that it?
Nope, that's not, that's an accessory.
So, on the side of, on the side of the building?
On the west, on the West Clark Street side, butted up against the existing garage.
12 by 16?
Correct.
Um, how about if you remove that to the other side? I know you, I know your lot, you know, I've been by there, a lot of us have been by there. Your lot is pretty much taken up with, with everything.
Sure do.
You have a lot of stuff there.
I do, I have a farm. I have no, no ability to access that building to keep supplies for my animals. My plan is to use that building to keep G and H. And the goats' houses are on that side.
Or can you move, you can't go on the other side of this farm?
My 50...
You would need a variance if you did that. And if you shifted some of the stuff around on your property.
Okay. And the only other part of my property that I possibly could build that on is where I've had my organic farm for 17 years.
Anyone else have another question? Where's your organic farm between the barn?
My organic farm is on the Clark Street side in the rear corner of the lot.
Okay, what would... Chairman's saying is you're putting the 12 by 16 off the barn, correct?
I'm putting the 12 by 16 off the garage.
So, looking at the front of the garage, well, it says barn in my paper, but... If you're standing on the driveway, looking at the garage, barn, you're putting it on the left side, right? Why don't you put it on the right side?
Because then I wouldn't be able to get into my yard.
Right at the other way, on the 12 foot out, the 16 is long.
I wouldn't be able to walk into my yard.
Well, how many feet? What's that look? To the right of the barn, you have a little building, two outbuildings. What's the little outbuilding?
That's the chicken coop.
Can you move this chicken coop to the other side of the other?
It's been there for almost 12 years and now I can't. I really couldn't.
If you move those two outbuildings a little bit, put the addition on there, you'd only be looking for variance for the fence.
You wouldn't have access to the garage shed, which is the 8 by 16, on the West Clark Street side? Can you do that? Because of the goat, there's goat fence that goes around on the two pens that are there. And by doing, doing it there, you'd have to walk.
Well, if you might have to shuffle a few things around and maybe you get some pipes and move these sheds around, the sheds can be moved very easily.
They're all on...
They're all on stone foundations.
I really can't. It's not easy. They're post and beam sheds and they probably weigh about four or 5,000 pounds each.
So, they're on foundations?
Yes, they are.
Anyone else have other questions?
The size of the shed, the 12 by 16, what has brought you to make it that large? Could we reduce the size of the shed as reducing the conformities? Because we're looking for a way to try and position this to eliminate it. So, is there incentive to reduce it for us?
It's already, well, there's only a 20-foot, unrequired 20 feet from the property line, which is where the garage ends. So, I have 20 feet of land and it's just there.
See, nine plus 16 is 25, right? So, I understand that you probably don't want to build a five-foot-wide shed to stay within the setback. When I'm asking you a question, do you need all 16 feet of width off of that?
I would like that, yes.
Okay, but we would like to try and reduce the non-conformity and stay within that.
Can you be more specific because I don't see how you could reduce the conformity?
Well, right now, you don't have any variance against the barn or the garage. And as my fellow member mentioned, we have it listed as barn here. So, the reason why you come forward this board, one of the variances is the 12 by 16 addition that you would like to put on this. I'm saying that nine feet, which is what is remaining to the edge of the property, plus the 16 feet of width is 25. And I'm saying if you have a 20-foot minimum requirement here, then to build without a variance request, you could have a five-foot-wide structure. If a five-foot-wide structure wouldn't be large enough for you...
It naturally would not be.
What, what would be? Is 16 is the only number?
16. That's the plans too that I have. I also have those building plans that came as a kit when I built a previous building in the back, on the back property. And I'd like to follow the same building design. I do need the space, building a five-foot space to put animal feed and hay. And, I mean, we're talking about, you know, probably 15, 20 bouts of hay that I buy and fill up. I need the space to put a, a five-foot building wouldn't, wouldn't hold that.
Okay, Mr. Seaman. So, so this shed is for, this addition is for hay?
I'm sorry.
It's for hay?
It's for hay and V and other supplies, milking sand.
Why don't you just go five foot down each side of it? You put some doors in second hand now?
Say it again, sir?
Add five feet to the left and the right side, the whole length of the shed. The barn is there now.
Well...
Then you don't need a variance, we're trying to get...
I, I could, but, but if I didn't have three front yards, I could build it right on the property line too. And I do have a really extreme margin, I have three front yards. So, I have all that space on my land that I can't use.
Well, I think you have so much space that you can come up with a solution without needing a variance.
You had said too, the garage shed is there. The garage shed is there, it's from the 1800s and it's an old carriage house. And the structure that's there is there, it's not...
Yeah, but you're adding the 12 by 16 on to this one.
It's not, it's not going to be on to it.
It's a budget.
Well, it's a budget.
It's a budget.
It's a budget.
Then why go along and just, sorry, no. You only started hanging there, I mean, you got a lot of property out here.
I have hay, B hives, V...
Well, you could do 10 foot, 10 foot, 10 foot up all the way.
I could, but I'm asking the board for variance to build the proposed building. I mean, I don't...
We're offering, we're kind of offering some suggestions to try and work with you.
I know.
But you're being adamant about...
No, I am being adamant.
You're rather than, oh, you want what you want.
I do, I do want what I want.
There's no compromise, okay?
I mean, I need, I feel that I need that space for my farming business.
And you've been on that, you've been on that property for years and, and, you know...
And I want to...
It is a peculiar place and you've used that whole property. So, I mean...
I have and I still have that space to build on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, please? Anyone else speaking in favor of this? Anyone here opposed? You have any, you have anything to say?
A couple things too. With the development of the post-re, with the new Cumberland Farms that is there, the Dunkin' Donuts has been there for a while. There is a lot of traffic coming by and the fence would help. We have no privacy where we are, there's people on a daily day-to-day basis there. It's the dentist's office that is there, there's a lot of us, there's people coming in there from Monday to Friday or something, that, and there's a lot of traffic.
Thank you. All right, there's not many.
I just wanted to know that there have been four emails that I received expressing opposition to the plan, one of which was an Alice.
Which was, Mr. Seaman?
There was typically, we require that people speaking on the traffic identify themselves. So, I'm just knowing that number four was submitted in Alice.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else opposed? Any other questions? None? Okay, this hearing is closed. We'll have an action for you shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, what are your thoughts? There's no ready change here, it's just...
Well, hang on. My thoughts on the shed is extension on the barn. There's room to move that anywhere else on the property. And as far as the fence, I don't have a problem with the fence because that is a very busy intersection. And it's all, it's all road and you have commercial separating the farms. So, I think a six-foot fence here would be the buffer. So, I don't have a problem with the fence, but I do have a problem with the barn.
Thank you, Mr. Vasina.
I, I do agree that there doesn't appear to be any room for compromise. And I do think that there's possibilities to orient the storage facilities that they need in different areas of the lot. I do, they'll have a concern about the fence. The extra three feet of height that is a property that has a lot of sight heights into the roads. So, I'm just concerned about raising it at that level. It sounded like it would be more of an obstructive view than the current fence that is laid there. So, I put that before the board in terms of safety for the general public being able to navigate around the roads for that area as opposed to dealing with an applicant that hasn't been able to work with us on some of the other suggestions that I mentioned.
Did you say, did you say where the fence is going exactly? It's not, it's not going up by two stories, or whatever. Mr. Harris, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the current fund is tackled a matter of fence. It's planned to stop, it's planned to stop well before the 25-foot clearance to own the city road, which requires...
So, you're seeing, um, with all traffic and... Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. So, it's predominantly in the back is, is how I understood it.
Correct.
Okay. Which would be the West Main Street side, I can imagine. Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, we approve both without the other case?
Yes. You can approve both, deny both, and approve all you like.
Yes, she wants to put your motion, because we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the fence, but deny the 12 by 16 barn, shed, garage, where you go.
Second. We have a motion.
The motion is based on the odd shape of the property.
We have a motion that's been split to, this would be to deny the building and approve the fence.
Mr. Chairman, reasons, collective reasons have to be stated for both approval and the house, I think. Because are you approving or are you... And the denial on the shed is that it's just too close to property line. And there's a lot of other space on the property that should change the size and relocate it.
A motion has been made. Mr. Dubois, with the motion. Mr. Vasina?
With the motion.
Mr. Gangir?
With the motion.
Mr. Seaman?
With the motion.
Item number five, 229 Bridgeport Avenue, MPP 18 slash 200 slash 13, CDD dash two. Thomas Lynch Attorney for Devon Investments LLC, owner. Varies Section 5 dot 5 dot 4 dot 2, distance between liquor permit establishment to less than 500 feet to allow a cat permit in lieu of existing restaurant liquor permit. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Lynch, just before we get started, I'm going to ask Mr. Harris a question. Mr. Harris, uh, this, this particular thing, you know, I'm all in favor of hearing this right now this evening. There should be a six-month period and, and the board sometimes, uh, you know, if we have, if we were having a hearing tonight and, you know, it was denied, then the next month they could ask the board if they could be there earlier. And I think it would be designed for, it's always the board's option to, you're denied within six months. So if you want to hear this, you can. You're not, you're not... Well, I'm in favor, absolutely in favor of hearing this evening. But I just want to clarify the application. I just want to ask that question is, is to, you know, why you were asked.
Why, I assume that Mr. Lynch would probably ask that question right now. I mean, there's not, there's not a formal process in which an applicant has to build or another, where they don't have to submit a letter saying, may I meet, may I, you know, please resubmit.
It, it used to be that, well, like, years ago?
It's not a requirement, it's not permed, bylaws, it's not a requirement in state statute or regulations.
Because what I, what I did with this application is I made a very minor amendment referencing the word cafe and not referencing the word liquor permit. And I think that that's a key element of presentation that I'm going to be making. Well, I don't, I don't want you to think that I'm not in favor of hearing you, but I, I just wondered how it came about. Go ahead, sir. So is the consensus of the board for us to go forward? Thank you. So just to begin, uh, I have the pleasure of being here tonight with Dan Rizzo and Chris Hay, the two partners of Liberty Rock Cafe. It's located in two-twenty-nine Bridgeport Avenue. And again, as you all know, Dan, here before you, which is February fourteenth meeting, presented an application to you for a variance of, uh, pertinent sections of our regulations as they relate to location of liquor permits within fifteen hundred feet of each other. And I had the opportunity to review the, uh, NGAT tape of that hearing, also within minutes. And as you all know, the board, uh, was short that night with members. There was a vote that was taken. Uh, the vote to approve the application was three to one, uh, but without the full board and the fourth vote necessary for the variance, effectively the application was denied. And, uh, again, through review of the tape, uh, I look at John Vazina with a smile on her face and, uh, I think the telling moment of that public hearing was when John asked, "Dan, what is your legal hardship?" And quite honestly, this was when Rizzo said, "I don't believe I have one." And I think that, uh, that was sort of the kiss of death right there. And I don't blame John for, uh, his vote that night. So my clients have come to me, I have, I'm going to be doing some other work for them, hopefully down the road, planning a zoning board in terms of submitting a special permit for an outdoor patio. But Dan and Chris are really committed to this site. Uh, they're running a fantastic facility right now. I don't know if any of the board members have had the opportunity to go into Liberty Rock. But, uh, it's actually the location of a liquor permit for over thirty-five years. If you remember, Rickers was located at that site going back into the eighties. Uh, it was set in the King's Court, uh, going into the last couple of years. And then Dan and Chris took the spot over and have done extensive renovations inside and are really committed to, uh, you know, making a real go there. But I think in terms of answering John's question or any of your questions as to the existence of a legal hardship in this application, it really goes to the dichotomy and actually the inconsistency between the regulations of the Department of Consumer Protection that relate to liquor permits and our zoning regulations. Because, uh, I think Steve may have touched upon it at a public hearing back in February, that under our zoning regulations, we do not regulate permits, but we regulate only the location of a liquor permit. And I think that that's very key here because this is the third application that I brought before you. Uh, over the last two years, I came before you representing, uh, Rich Cole and I, the owner of the Stonebridge Restaurant. I also came before you with an application on behalf of Frank Argulo, who took over the space in the, uh, Fichelle Building, uh, in the corner of the Post Road and West Main Street, where R three through three is located now. And in both, both of those instances, uh, there were existing restaurant permits at those locations. And the intent of the partners buying the property, certainly with Rich Cole and I, with Stonebridge, who's been there for so long, the intent was to change the permit so that the cafe permit, and there was a lot of talk at the last meeting about the wall being built, that's really not the telling point here. And that's really not, uh, what Dan and Chris are overly concerned about. Because that lends itself to an argument that they just want to avoid the expense of putting a partition and that can then go down a slippery slope to the argument that, uh, they're seeking a variance just for economic purposes. But really, the intent is for what the nature of the facility will be. And when they took over that site, the prior use, the prior permit was a restaurant permit. And what I handed out to you at the outset is a handout that basically shows the pertinent regulations under our state statutes, you know, we have statutes and then we have regulations pertaining to each statute. And the first page there is really a printout that shows the difference between two types of permits. And it really boils down to whether or not you intend in your business model, or you intend with the use of your facility, to have a separate dining room that will separate itself from the bar area of the restaurant. And that's the intent under a restaurant permit. When Dan and Chris, uh, took this facility over, prior, uh, owner had a restaurant permit. And it's in the, uh, I want to use your words, uh, the operation of the zoning office or, uh, Steve Harris's interpretation of the zoning regulations that exist now. But the zoning office in a situation where somebody wants to come in and change their permit from a restaurant permit to a cafe permit, Stephen has taken the position that that requires starting from ground zero basically. In other words, if you have a restaurant permit and then you want to change to a cafe permit, so that then you have, in essence, a bar area that's not separated from a restaurant. You have the flexibility of having limited hours of serving food. But most importantly, you have the ability to limit access to the premises to those who are twenty-one or older. And that's really the intent here, this is what they want with the facility is, uh, basically to protect, uh, their liability and protect the situation where families come in or eighteen-year-olds or nineteen-year-olds come in, they have dinner in a restaurant, and then they slip into the bar, nobody sees them going into the bar, and then they're going to the bar area and attempting to purchase alcohol. When you have a cafe permit, you take that off the table. You can limit access to your premises because you have one room, you have a bar area, and again, if you haven't been in, uh, Bart, uh, Liberty Rock, uh, they have the bar area, they have a gaming area, and then they have tables for eating. And that's just a little cafe. The liquor control folks come in and if you want to have a cafe, they make you, I mean, a restaurant, they make you have a partition. And that's what was in existence from the time they took the facility over. So I think it's important to note the discrepancy there, that the state has liquor regulations that talk about different type of permits, whereas our milk zoning regulations don't. You need to have fifteen hundred feet separating yourself from another permit. It doesn't differentiate between a restaurant permit, a tavern, a cafe permit, a club, any of those different types of permits under the liquor control authority regulations. I also, uh, attached to that some definitions. And again, uh, going to the second page, the definition under Connecticut General Statute thirty dash twenty-two A is that a cafe permit allows the holder to sell all types of alcoholic beverages. It's not limited to beer and wine, it's all types. But the differentiation between that and the restaurant is on the second line. The law requires cafes to keep food regularly available for on-premises consumption. This requirement may be made, may be met by making sandwiches, soups, or other fresh or processed food available. So again, that gives the cafe owner the flexibility that if he wants to serve until nine o'clock, he can serve until nine o'clock. He doesn't have to serve food until twelve or one o'clock when, uh, he has to close the premises. That's a big difference from a restaurant. A restaurant has to make itself available with a hot kitchen, uh, full, full service of food, and it has to be available during the hours of operation of the restaurant. So, you know, I hope that that supplements, uh, as brief as I can be, uh, the differentiation between the two, uh, permits and has, as it relates to the zoning regulations. But, uh, it clearly, I think that presents itself, uh, as a hardship. Uh, I also have letters from the two permit holders who would be affected by this application. I have submitted to the next file, I have a letter from John Miranda, uh, and it's stating that the undersigned owner and permit holder of Pit Stop Cafe at three thirty-eight Bridgeport Avenue, within two hundred feet of the Liberty Rock Cafe. Hereby gives notice of my approval of the variance application. And then secondly, most importantly, Dennis McCann, who was in order of the Bridgeport Flyer, the adjacent property owner and, uh, actually the one, uh, permit holder who is most affected by this, uh, because it is an adjacent property. He has signed the same letter, giving his consent to granting this application. So I will submit that for part of the file. So, you know, just to wrap things up, uh, you know, I think it's a reasonable application. Uh, I've cited the instance of two recent applications that I brought before you with the same similar situation where the permit holder wants to change his permit from a restaurant to a cafe. The board has granted these applications in the past. And I would ask them to do the same with this application. I am going to submit versus to that to the ladies. Okay, thank you, your selection. Do we have any questions for Attorney Lynch? Mr. Vazina?
So... What's unique about this lot that generates hardship?
It has nothing to do with the lot.
Okay.
What it has to do is the regulation. And hardship relates to the way that the regulation affects either a piece of property through physical characteristics or, or the use.
Okay, so your, the use is the component.
I'm saying that this property has been used as a site for a liquor permit for over thirty-five years. And I hate to use the word technicality, John, but it really, this is a technicality. It's changing a liquor permit to a different type of permit, but it's not having anything to do with the location of a facility within fifteen hundred feet of other permits. I guess, let me think about it. Mr. Soder?
Attorney Lynch, I remember when you argued the, uh, Stonebridge, wasn't also said that the cat mine was out of the, the bar?
Yes, and I think I just said that about you didn't.
Oh, yeah, you did say that.
Yeah, that's right, you did say, I, I think I said that's really, you didn't, there may be a variation. I mean, your focus at the last hearing with all due respect was the law. And, you know, it... I kept hearing a three-word... I've heard enough about the law. You said, you said...
In fact, you said, "from then sneaking into the other quarter."
Yeah. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any other questions? Okay, you stand as opposed. Okay. Well, I'm glad to see it back because I personally don't think you got a fair vote last month, so, again, I have no problem with this, I'm glad to see the board supported. Anyone else? Mr. Gagnier?
Uh, I agree, I voted, uh, for the variance last time. I'm glad they came back. For the Attorney Lynch, who this time articulated a very specific hardship and for that reason I will move him from the office.
Well, I'm glad you came back too, and I think that we have some clarifying points that we didn't have last time. And, um, uh, okay with how I voted, then I'll be okay with how I vote tonight. But I appreciate that they came back. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you have a motion? Would like to make a question?
Sure. I, uh, make a motion, um, to approve the variance with the hardship and the inconsistencies between the Department of Consumer Protection regulations and our zoning regulations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second motion. Mr. Dubois with the motion. Mr. Vazina?
With the motion.
And Mr. Gagnier?
With the motion.
Mr. Soder?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved. Thank you.
Item number six is forty-five Norwood Avenue, MPB forty-nine slash six-oh-four slash fifteen, in an art and, um, Matthew Martino, agent for Michael Rose, owner. Very section four dot one dot four, front yard projection to eighteen feet where twenty-one feet permit.
Hi, sir. Um, I'm here, I have my...
Just step up a little more to the microphone if you would. Thank you.
Obviously, my name is Michael Martino, and here on behalf of the homeowner...
Can I, can I just ask, do you need your hat, friend? Thank you.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here...
She need your address.
My address?
Your address.
What, the address?
She does your business for you, I have a P.O. box.
Oh, sorry. My address is fifteen Beecher Road, New Haven, Connecticut, oh, six, five, one, two. Okay, sir. I'm here on behalf of Michael Rose, the homeowner and my customer, uh, for the variance for the front porch only, uh, where the existing property has been, when it was purchased, it was non-conforming. Uh, so we had the maintenance survey done because there wasn't one on record. The house was already in the existing setback, uh, permanent, the six building permits that were issued, and it wasn't, obviously it was non-conforming. So what that's done is, from what the house is purchased, from what we understood, is where we can no longer, we can't make it, we can no longer, let's say, we can't make it, uh, anymore non-conforming and it already exists. So because the house is in setback, we're, we're limited to the front structure of the house, where the city, I believe, allows four feet for attachments such as porch and stuff like that. Uh, we're looking for six feet off that house, which would bring us from twenty-five feet by, uh, city code, I believe, to eighteen feet. Just for the front porch area itself.
Okay, thank you. Questions, right, Mr.? Eighteen, to be correct, eighteen.
So you're building a new porch? Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I'm, and it's going to be eighteen feet from the straight line?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm, I'm this... Do you have a book somewhere? Is it good to you? No, no, it's second, I need to find it. I have no other questions right now, we'll wait for you. I'll take your time. Okay, I'm all set, all right?
I have a question. What's the hardship for this? Value of the property? The hardship typically goes with the land or the use, and it's a... The hardship typically goes with the land or the use, and it's a term you, Lynch, reiterated to you this evening. So you have a hardship for the land or for the use of the front?
For use of the front.
Okay, and what would that make, you agree that one?
That we can't put a, we can't put a front structure on the property as it sits, because it was, it was non-conforming in nineteen eighty-six, when the city issued the building permits for the additions that were put on the house, that were put in the more areas of the property. So, because they were, because they were dozens of building permits that were issued in nineteen eighty-six, it means the house was non-conforming. So therefore, we can't even utilize a front for, or a fourth foot approachment on the setback, that's allowed by, by the city building. Which means we would basically be able to put a concrete scoop in front of a seven hundred thousand dollar home.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Sir?
So you're putting a six by sixteen addition on plus the porch?
Yes, sir. The, the addition is six by sixteen, but it's actually where the existing, if you look at the part where the existing front porch is on the right hand side, on the left hand side of that building.
So you're swearing that off and then you're adding a porch?
We're not, we actually set it back, it's inset four feet from the main...
From the porch?
From the main porch of the house. May approach, so I can get... So the survey there was the existing porch that was on the front house. We removed this porch that went straight across. We're now, the addition is, the nine is one of sixteen, sixteen feet across, or four foot inset from the main house here. So we want to, we want to break this part out of sixteen from the existing house, which is non-conforming, bring it all the way over.
So you want to extend this porch this way?
That's correct.
Square it off for that?
Yes, sir.
You should have drawn that in, proposed porch.
It's only, it's only about a foot step.
Mr. Chairman, there's a larger project, like footballs and contests. He's gonna build a project back with Leslie Carport, does the variance for that. He's building a porch on the right hand side, which would have been out, that's okay. And there's a little dodged portion of the house on the left hand, left front side, sort of infilling down to square the house off, that's okay. The only thing he's asking the variance for is the front portion of that porch that faces forward.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Any more questions for this gentleman? Anyone here opposed? No opposition, okay, this is your question. Okay, um, my thoughts are, there's not much difference here between the eighteen and twenty-four, and I don't have a problem with this application.
Well, if you remember, Edward, we approved too, pretty much the same, one in one mind, I forget if it was another somewhere else, who almost said identical application.
Any other comments? Nope. Okay, anyone have any questions? Make a motion approved. Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of how the house will position on the lot.
Okay, we have a motion approved, we have a second on the motion, Mr. Gettner? With the motion, Mr. So?
With the motion, Mr. Dacino?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With, on the motion, it's approved.
Item number seven, nine hundred and four East Broadway, MPB twenty-seven slash four forty-seven slash one, in an R five zone. Robert Tovin, architect for Howard Diamond and Eden Diamond owners. Vary section three dot one dot four dot one. East side yard setback to two point five where five required. Four dot one dot four, west side yard depth projection to one point seven two where eight permitted. East side yard depth projection to two point five one where four permitted. Six point three point two, expansion of non-conforming structure. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Robert Tovin, and I represent the Diamonds, which are here this evening, Eden and Howard. And we submitted this proposal previously, or for variance back in December, and we were denied without prejudice, because we were ceding the lot coverage on the property. The property is twenty-eight foot wide, which the basis for variance is very narrow, lot. And we're in the process of raising the house for flood conformity, and while we're in the process of raising the house, we are converting it to a full-time residence for the Diamonds that is compliant with ADA Department's anticipation of, this is Diamond, a wheelchair, and thus we're adding a stair, and an internal stair that doesn't exist right now, because it's one serious structure, and an internal elevator. In order to reduce the size of the house, as you requested, we basically expanded the second floor. Initially, you had suggested that we expand the entirety, take all of our new structure and expand it on the second floor. And because we wanted to maintain the front portion of the house in its existing conditions, to maintain its integrity, we chose to limit the amount of expansion on the, for the addition on the second floor. In this case, in order to meet the file compliance within the regulated lot coverage, I had to reduce, remove actually, a section of the existing house, about four foot by four foot area, in order to meet the requirements of the forty-five percent lot coverage that the code requires. The, in reducing the overall size of the house, we also reduced the number of variances that we had been asking for with our previous application. So we're down to basically existing structure, raising up a new structure on top of it, and thus maintaining existing setbacks and curvy in place. So we're not asking for any reduction in the setbacks that we currently have, and basically, we're just lifting the house at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you have made, you made a lot of changes to this, I believe, that does, or variances since the last time. Any questions for this gentleman? No?
No.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
I also submitted two, two emails from neighbors that responded to my letters.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed to this application? Okay, this is your question.
Well, they've made a lot of changes to this broad range since it was here before. They did about as good as you can do. I don't have a problem with two variances.
Your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with this one, I think they did a good job on it, they seem to us, so I don't have any problems with it. It is a corner lot, so you know, you gotta work on that, so they did a good job.
Okay, any more questions? I make a motion approved. Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the variance of the lot.
Make a motion to approve, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Gettner?
With the motion.
Mr. So?
With the motion.
Mr. Dacino?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved. Item number eight, thirty-five Thompson Street, MPB thirty-five slash four forty-two slash twenty-five, in an R five zone. Winston Smith, S Y attorney for Gail Murray owner. Vary section three dot one dot four dot one, setback as follows. Front yard setback from ten to three point eight. Side yard setback from five to four point four. Other side conforms. Vary section four dot one dot four, projections. Front yard two, projection allowed, eight. Distance to front yard property line required, three point two provided. Eastwardly side yard conforms. Three. I assume that that should be rear yard, thank you. Four foot projection allowed, sixteen to rear yard property line required. Two point four feet provided to Eve, one point six feet provided to window well bubble. Westwardly side, one foot projection allowed. Four foot distance to side property line required, two point four feet provided. And note that the gas meter in all window wells projects two feet. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. And good evening, my name is Winston Junior, and I'm attorney here at now, on the Green and Nine Ebo Street, the Motte Bank Building. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property, who are sitting here with Daisy Young and Gail Murray. And we're asking that you continue the application, because they've been, well, a little background, and then they've, they've been living together at the property for over twenty years. Gail bought the property, living there for about thirty-three years, and right now, it's a small house, and dates back to nineteen thirty. So it's a non-conforming, but pre-existing. Mister Young, Miss Murray want to renovate the home for their retirement use. It's very small, you have to drive by it, it's located in the historic Trumbull, Fort Trumbull neighborhood, and they have Eden Beach access rights, so for them, it's really kind of a dream location. They've been there for a long time. The house is badly damaged, the, the stone, Cedar Block Foundation, which I'll see some pictures of in a moment from Mr. Crabtree, is at advanced stage, it's a fine apartment composition. It's a, it needs help with it, with its wiring and electric, which is in large part dating back to the time of installation. They upgraded it over time, out of a hodgepodge, and some of the work was done by Mister, Mister Young, who's retired now, he's an electrical engineer. But now it needs to be completely replaced and brought up to the modern codes. The patch that really no longer exists. The rooms, I mean, inside are very small, it's almost a honeycomb, it needs to be renovated for purposes of foundation four. The floors are now beside and inside, the roof, it's been repaired several times, several of them by Mister Young, but it too is now structurally sound. The plumbing date is back largely from the nineteen thirties as well, a patchwork of updates, that have been kind of marbled throughout the whole system. The shingles on the outside are actually the asbestos. It's sure that the home is something close to a one hundred percent renovation, virtually none that can be, can be retained, and therein lies the basis of our home. As you know, we're far below fifty percent rule in Milford, so in fact, the zoning professionals indicated that the entire structure needs to be replaced, and I got to my site, and it indicates that's, that's exactly right. So, with that, we, the applicants have been here a couple of times, if you grab a look from your file. The board has been generous enough to grant your applications earlier, on two prior occasions, the courts have indicated that certain changes shouldn't be made. Mister Young and Miss Murray have actually done everything humanly possible now to adhere to that. They've tried to learn from the process as best as they can, and I think that this application actually does do just that. I'd like to point out, Jorge, that this site plan here is at least important indicative of the difficulty that the back lot presents. There's a lot of detail here, they've gone to extreme lengths to meet everything that they can, but what I'd like to look at in particular for our purposes is those smaller maps that are attached in the larger, the larger presentation, because those do away with a lot of the site management construction detail, and kind of bring us down to a clearer presentation of just the overlay of the new foundation on the old one. And for our purposes, here aside of you, that's important, because as you can see from, from that plan, again, I think the second or third page on the, on the smaller maps that you've got, the new and existing proposal is right on the footprint of the old one. They're not looking to expand it in any way. If you look at the upper left hand corner, you'll see three point eight feet from the top of the proposed structure to the front line of the property. Capers back to four point seven, for purposes of, of the variance, we need to hit the closest margin in, and request that you run it across in that fashion, three point eight feet. It's the existing point on the property right now, that's where the property line and the building were separated, as we sit here today. And running across the front, it runs over to four point seven today, as, as we speak here. And then if you run down the left hand side, you can see that the property, the existing structure, actually capers just inside the old one, which is actually a small reduction in the non-conformity. And then looking across the background, it's the same, it's the same thing, it's a small reduction in the non-conformity, as, as we sit here and talk today. So the, the building itself is virtually on the old footprint, we wouldn't, some discussions with the staff, we wouldn't even need to be coming before you for, for a variance if we didn't have to take the whole building down. It wouldn't be, and frankly, there could be some disagreement as to whether to take it down, or as to come for the board for a variance, because we're not really asking you to vary anything that doesn't exist in the property today. We're simply asking you to approve this application in conformance of the rules. So for us, kind of the hardship is both the, the shape of the property as it exists today, and the operation of Milford's rules that would, because we have to take down the whole structure in fifty percent rule, and allow us to take down one percent, and reconforming with the entire, with all the setbacks. We're asking you to approve this here today.
Thank you.
And actually, I think at this point, Mr. Crabtree is going to present, have a little presentation for you on some other cases.
All right, thank you. Any questions? We have a question.
My question is, existing houses are one story, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So you're adding two stories to it?
That is correct.
So you're increasing the non-conformity, correct?
Actually, the height is not in non-conformity, the height in this, it's an R five, allows thirty-five feet in height, I believe we're coming in at thirty-two.
Okay, if I remember right, the last time they were here, the other attorney that was representing, they brought a decision from the court on why they got, you know, overturned. Do you have that decision, so?
I do have that decision, I've gone through it, you may recall from the, the last discussion.
I'd like to know what the, you got your variance in last time, what happened? Can I just give us a little history on that?
Yeah, so the variance last time, and the line that you were talking about in the court case, was that the issue before the court was not height. The variance issued by this board was not as the height. The court discussed height, but didn't incorporate it into its decision. It is, what we call in the law, that wasn't a foundation decision, and it wasn't a direction from the court to this board. Then what the, the court was worried about in that decision was the fact that the building wasn't exactly on the footprint of the existing building, and that it was being moved slightly. You may remember from the last time, although the, the footprint didn't change much, its location shifted. That was what the court...
That was what the court actually found in this decision.
Okay, why do you fill the two full stories on that instead of just one additional? You're making a three-story building. Why can't you just go to?
Well, there, I mean, she lived there for thirty-three years in one story, and now you doubled it, now you're tripping. Obviously, she certainly could, but for whatever it's worth, we're not asking the court for variance as to height, for her, for the variance on the setbacks. And so she was allowed about thirty-five feet, she's not going up thirty-five feet. She's only going up thirty-two.
Mister Harris, the setbacks are existing in this square. Because we're saying the same footprint. The setbacks that are here would just be for reapproval.
The new house is not exactly on the, well, the footprint of the house, the house will be demolished, that's why the building is yours. The new house will be positioned, it's shown to be positioned pretty much in the same location as the old house when it was built.
There are some improvements to setbacks, I know it for you, both on the left side and in on the left side yard and the back yard. There's some technical diminution of whatever nonconformity there was, both respect to buildings on, and respect to ease and compactness. It lessens.
Have we approved these variances before in the first court? And the judges ruled in favor of it being approved. That brings us back again to what was pretty much the same.
I only did know, as they were saying before, there are differences between this application and others. In particular, those other applications were both larger in footprint and differently cited on the property. This with certain, you know, de minimis differences is on the same footprint in the same place. And that seemed to be what the court in the earlier case was focusing on, both expansion and movement of the site as a property. So what we tried to do is, as it was, you know, earn as we go, the court said, don't move it, so we didn't move it, the court said, don't expand it, so we didn't expand it. So it's, it's not expanding.
What we're thinking is, we're hoping that if it's appealed again, that the court will finally go along. Kind of.
That's what we, yeah.
We only learned from what they say, we're trying to incorporate what they say. We feel confident that they were to take the same line of reasoning, they could stand before probably the same judge and say, here's why this one is different, in much the way that we are now.
Okay, now, Mister here, Chris.
Do you have a copy of the judge's decision, Chris?
I have a copy on my file.
Yes. Because the other attorney had said the last page is the most important, that tells us what the judge wants us to do when he sends it back to us. I just wanted to see what that says.
I don't have a copy for the board to do it, but I'd like to try to find it to you. I only know this is not that application. Okay, the application that was sent.
Well, there's some background on why they turned it down, that's what I'd just like to say. I understand it's a totally separate application, but I just wanted to kind of get an idea of what this is thinking. If I can.
Mister Chairman, we have the complete legal file.
That's right, you would have the whole signature.
We have both, we have both decisions.
Okay, good, good. Mister Harris, I have a question for you. Is it legal to, I thought, not reforming, but you had expanded, you always said you can expand in direction, increase the living space. Is that true, or are they allowed to put two stories from how?
Well, my language of our zoning regulations is, let me just read it again. Okay, session six three two, six point three one two, which is nonconforming structures. It reads enlargement, extension, or alteration. Structures failing to meet any requirement of these regulations under misuse, including land or parking or motor spaces, shall not be enlarged, extended, or altered if the result will be an increase in nonconformity. That's what it means. What that means, what that means is you can enlarge a nonconforming structure if you want to increase the nonconformity.
And we're, in fact, not increasing the nonconformity here, we're decreasing the nonconformity.
I understand. If the board wants to read the last two court decisions, they get a full background. You can't.
Yeah, yes.
That's not, that's not something that you should, I don't think you should do it right now.
Okay, so we can hold off, hold here, hold.
If more members want to read, it does those two decisions, obviously, my advice would be to keep caring. Oh, and if you can read it and adjust it, that's what you want to do.
As you consider at that point, I would just pass it to the board. This application is not that application. That application was turned down by the board, it was there for the legal we want. This application can be changed. Just pass the board moving forward tonight, but obviously, it's in the board's discretion. Any other questions for attorney?
Any other questions?
No, okay. Mister Crabtree, Mister McLeod.
My name is Peter Crabtree, resides in Forest Stanley Street, Manhattan, Connecticut. Here on behalf of the two owners. I'm just going to pass out the recent photographs that show the three corners of the building and to show that it's beyond its natural life. Some of these were given out at the very first meeting, but years ago, but I have been doing one member who's here since then, so we're just going to keep them off. So we'll have to take our word for it. There is, of course, one way we can build this if we maintain the fiction that we're under fifty percent. But we don't want to go that route, we don't think it's productive, and we don't really concede that that's not viable option with the foundation and other things that Attorney Smith described. Of course, the other issue is, there were three previous cases involving the same home. First one was divided off quickly. So the homeowner reduced the size of the home, and the court got denied by the court. Homeowner reduced the size of the home again, and the court got denied a second time. Now we're here, this is the fourth attempt. The question is, why are we here? First time, we could say we're asking for ten out of ten. Second time, we're here, we're asking for eight out of ten. Third time, we're here, we're asking for like five out of ten. Today, we're down to one out of ten. If we can't get one, we're out of use of the property here. And what I mean by that is, of course, Attorney Smith brought this up and showed you, that we're back down to the size of the original home. We actually slightly reduced setbacks, these are the, or actually, they increased the setback of the old home. And the way we were able to squeeze that in without playing funny math here was, the old home did have some objections to it. It wasn't perfectly square, and that's why we had to, we took the trouble of having somebody here draw this up, so we didn't have to take our word for it on how we did it. And of course, the other thing that we could do is, we could try to increase the setback. But as we increase the setback, we have to start making the footprint of the home smaller and smaller and smaller. And of course, some of the objections are, well, there's going to be three stories, smaller you make the footprint, the worse it looks like a rocket ship. And so just to show you that, that's really a futile approach, is if we did comply with all the setbacks, we would wind up with about a hundred and seventy-five foot home. And that, if you built it as a square, if you took and used every last piece of the property, it becomes trapezoidal, and then of course, it would come up to two hundred and sixty-two feet. But as we all know, you need six hundred and twenty-five feet on the first look, and a total of nine hundred and twenty-five feet to build a conforming home. Also, it's a little disturbing for me that trying to keep that applicant from having second and third floor here. The reason why I say that is, that there are numerous homes that have been granted coastal area management guarantees by the planning zone board. And like the applicant, they did have to go for setback guarantees. They weren't required to go for a height guarantee. And I just want to submit one for the record, I actually found on the file up here, when we did the research, that I, we can provide the address if you want to verify what I'm telling you. But this particular one was at one fifty-one Hillside Avenue. And the block was only seventeen feet wide, and home perimeters of the devil, I think the town actually took it down. And it was eleven feet wide, and so when they went back to the planning board, they, of course, didn't raise it up for a new home. And the new home was the same footprint as the old one, it's eleven point seven. So they were granted that, they didn't have to go for variance, and I don't think they should have, just like, I don't think that this applicant should have, just because they're on the water, it's not any less comfortable or more uncomfortable, but they wanted one, two stories more, and not being asked by the town to go for variance. And I don't think that that really applies in this case. And I just would like to present the application that went before the planning board for coastal area management, that got approved, and we did look at the variance file, we did go for side guarantee, didn't ask for any variance just for, to raise the building. From my perspective, whether you go thirty-five feet in your inland, or you go thirty-five feet in your outer coastal area management, it's all height is height. We're under the requirement of thirty-five feet. We should be entitled to that and not be held that, because we've got setback guarantees, it can't somehow go up, because there are other, there are other instances where these people of other applicants that went before the planning board on coastal area management zone requesting they weren't required to get a height variant with their side guarantee. So I just want to add that to the record. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I'll handle one more thing.
I just want to say something to you. This is an example that you're giving us.
No, that actually came from the, that isn't the record.
Yeah, well, I can see that, I mean, it's, you know, an argument to what you're doing. So I'm just going to pass it to the board members to see, because we all have it one time.
Yeah, that's actually from the file itself. And of course, one, probably, if you, the board members of this rear lot, may have walked out the driveway, probably didn't take the ability to walk around the backyard. And of course, like the other setbacks, backyard is nominal, it's two point seven, it's very, very, very low. And I submit that basically, whether we give you nineteen feet, or we give you two and a half feet, when the backyard, and see that the huge backyard, there's actually a landing system sloped off with some inland wetlands, and then there's houses over there on, I believe it's East Broadway, and the nearest house there, I would estimate probably a quarter seventy-five feet away. But you don't have to take my word for it, we're going to give you a hand around here, and you can keep these to see for yourself. And one other, one other improvement that wasn't touched on by Attorney Smith, because it's the rear lot, we have to put all the utilities underground. Currently, ironically, the gas line and the water line currently go across the neighbor's, the front yard, the neighbor's front property. So at right now, if there was a problem with utilities, they'd have to dig up the neighbor's yard to, you'll get the lines out of there, or ship it, and then relocate it to the driveway. So that problem will be cured once this permit is granted. And also, we have to provide man-made underground electric line because it's a rear lot. And with the new house, of course, we'll be putting in a new driveway anchor in the length of the side lot, such as it is, ten feet in front of the home. So I do think that, you know, what we're proposing is an improvement, I don't think it harms anybody, and we are down at that square one, which is basically the size of the home that was on where it stands. And I'm calling to three stories, I'm not asking for anything, there's somebody who's on the coastal side, the coastal shoreline of Milford, has been joining. We came up with five, five cases where that was a case, we didn't have to go for guarantees. I don't think it should figure in here.
Who owns the driveway to get this for property?
That's another anomaly on this particular site. It's a prescriptive easement, it isn't, it is, by today's standard, it is supposed to hold it, but again, that's part of the grand product process. If that lot didn't exist at all, we would have to ask for variance on the lot size, we'd have to ask for variance on that easement. But they do have legal access, but it's an easement rather than fee simple, or it's included in the land area computation for the assessor.
Okay, so to, any utility lines that travel would have to be dug up to get them out?
They'll have, they'll go through that easement area, they have to go through that way, because they're not going to go through the neighbors.
And are, so can, there's no problem with that happening? Use that, that travel?
No, they have, in fact, they actually had court cases on that, very same situation, it involved multi-family homeowners, when the cable companies came in, and the homeowners wanted, the multi-family homeowners, they wanted money, they said, wait a minute, you can't put that cable line into my building unless I grant you an easement. They went to the DPD, the senior DPD, and said, uh-uh, they're entitled, it's a public utility, they can go across this property provided. And so that question's really been answered, but in a slightly different venue, and it had to do with cable lines.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any, that's a good point.
You're all set, okay. Anyone else speaking on this?
I did just want to have Mister Young and Miss Murray just come up and address, and address it.
Absolutely.
Yes, my name is Beasley Young. I reside at thirty-five Thompson Street, Milford, since nineteen ninety-seven. My partner, Gail Murray, in the, you know, use and development of this property, since we're both retired, and I'm also a resident veteran, our, you know, intent from day one was to, you know, provide on the law and under your direction, additional bedrooms for my daughter, who's going to be a surgeon of residence. Yes, to take, to take care of us, you know, in our, you know, economy age, this is our retirement home. I am in favor of this application.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would you like to say something?
Well, yes, as I said, I'm Gail Murray, and yes, I am co-owner of thirty-five Thompson Street also. And as Mister Young and Attorney Smith have said, it is our retirement home, and I am helping now, and we would have bedrooms for our. And I am helping now and we would have bedrooms for my, my daughter also to help me. And yes, I also approve of this application.
Okay, thank you.
Coming tonight to help us.
Any questions? No, okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you. Okay, anyone else speaking in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
You are. My name is Jack Zolby. I assisted, I do house plans. I've been retired for a while. But I have also assisted the majority of my customers here in Milford especially to obtain building permits, those who wanted to, or less act as their own general contractor. Because I know, it's always, you all know that builders will dig out the permits as well. But there are times when I have been asked to assist with that. And Mr. Grant, who provided the owners of the plans, did a beautiful job with them. And he, Mr. Grant asked me if I could assist in getting, in helping him obtain the building permit and everything that was needed. So I am still working toward that. I had the opportunity to bring plans down to the building department shortly after this. And this is before all changes that are required have been done, of course. But even at that time, plans were accepted by the building department and went down to zoning. And that's when I was informed that there would be some concerns. And, but I am here to assist the owners of this property. They're two wonderful people. And I just want to help them get their permit and thank you.
We need your, your address.
My address, Lady Sigwin Drive, Milford, Milford.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Anyone else in favor? Okay. If you're opposed, anyone here opposed? If you're opposed, please step forward. Say your name, please, your address. If you can put that microphone down so we can hear.
My name is Tracy Bassi, no. I am the present owner of 33 Thompson Street, which is the property that is directly in front of the applicant Gail Murray's property of 35 Thompson Street. I live in the house of my 10-year-old son. I would like to state that I am opposed to this application to the zoning board of appeals that was submitted by Ms. Gail Murray. This case has been brought before the board on many occasions prior to being by in my home in July of 2016. And since then, this is the second time I've got to deal with it. The nearly identical application was submitted to the board and appealed, the board of appeals to the board. The board granted the variances, which at that time the previous owner, Ms. Lynn Simcoe, took the matter to court to oppose the approval. When I purchased the house in July of 2016, there was a memorandum of decision issued by Judge Hiller, which stated that Ms. Murray had not shown legally sufficient hardships that warranted granting her a variance. The current application that she is filed is her fourth application requesting a variance for the same property. It is still without legal sufficient hardship. I do have the decision to be applied now.
We don't need it.
I do. Okay. So I've just stated that I wanted to submit it to you because I did have the memorandum and.
Oh, you can submit it to us if you'd like. If you have.
Just, just so you know, we, particularly, if we keep these copies on our pile.
Mrs. Carr, I choose she, you want to, so you can.
I would like to submit.
Yeah, you can submit.
Yeah, I would just like to submit it because it can make it part of the record because it's set forward by the decision.
Sure, okay, right before.
After researching the matter, I found that the Superior Court denied the variances. It was my understanding that a court decision had been made and that the court decision would be upheld. I would have never purchased the home had I been made aware that Ms. Murray would try to get the same variances approved shortly after. By approving these variances, it would greatly impact my privacy and enjoyment of the home. Our homes are within the feet of each other now and to decrease that space would further or lessen any privacy that I have. The proposed construction is three stories and a finished basement, which will have her literally looking into my house. Her application is seeking to build approximately 2,200 square foot, which is nearly three times the size of the existing structure, which substantially, substantially increases the non-conformity and overearns the land adjacent to mine. Additionally, during any construction, my property will suffer the contractors, equipment, excavation materials, noise, and in particular, the easement across my property, which is for minimal access only. It is my understanding that the construction will require excavation of easement on my property, to which I do not consent. In previous applications, it was stated that she needed to show legally sufficient hardship to have these variances approved. Ms. Murray has obviously been living in the dwelling since her last application, showing that the structure is livable despite all of the renovations that needed to be done. The reasons she was given of the variances are clearly personal and do not show that there is any sufficient hardship was previously requested since the application only shows cosmetic differences from the three previous applications that were denied. I hope after reviewing the plans and materials provided to you and after hearing from myself and the holders regarding this matter that you agree that Ms. Murray's application cannot be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else in opposition? Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Simcoe, as you probably all know. I am a former owner of 33 Thompson Street. I have lived there for 15 years and I am opposed to this application. My former property is directly in front of 35 Thompson Street. I came, came before the board on two other occasions, explaining why the board shouldn't approve Gail's former applications, which are very similar to what is before you tonight. You approved both applications, which I had appealed in the Superior Court. The first application was approved by this board in July of 2012. The court case was in 2013 and my appeal was upheld by Judge Secino. In her decision, she stated, and I quote, "That the board had abused its discretion in granting this application in violation of its own regulations." The second board approval of Gail's application was in January of 2015. This board decision was also appealed and upheld by Superior Court in December 2015. Judge Hiller's decision, he stated, "The need for repairs and the desire for a larger living space are not legally sufficient hardships that warrant granting a variance." He went on to say that granting a variance to allow the expansion for a non-conforming structure is contrary to established state municipal law. Over the past five years, I have spent tens of thousands of dollars to overturn this board's decision to preserve my privacy and protect my property value. An approval tonight approved to be a complete waste of my freaking life savings, excuse me. For Gail to come before you tonight with plans for virtually the same size structure with the same footprint that was overturned twice by two Superior Court judges is making a travesty of this entire process. She is basically asking the board to make the same approvals that multiple Superior Court judges have found to be in violation of the city's own regulations. Based on the Milford Zone, Milford zoning regulations and the ruling of two judges in the appeals, this board has no choice but to deny any and all variances, variance requests for this non-conforming structure to be expanded.
We need your current address.
289, 289 Burn Plains Road.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Edward Nelson and I'm a former owner of 33 Thompson Street. Currently at 289 Burn Plains Road, Milford. I am opposed to this application. Prior hearings, I'm part of the board's responsibility to give due consideration for preserving property values. A license will turn down and this product, project would obviously reduce the property value of 33 Thompson Street. Last time the board's response was that I didn't present any compromises. The reason for that is because there are compromises. There are no 2,500 square foot, three-story houses on 1,800 square foot rear lots in this town and probably not any other towns. I thought it was obvious that one-story structure, keeping over a fence in your backyard is far more desirable than a three-story structure pounding over your home. Think about when you bought your home and which scenario would be more desirable to you. For me, myself and Tracy, we choose this small house and the huge one too. In past years, we have brought up zoning regulations 6.3.2, state structures showing any requirement in these regulations of that we need to enlarge, extend it or alter if the result would need an increase in act of form. Judge Hiller and Judge Secino both ruled that that would be an increase in the non-conformity. And that height is actually a factor and they would need a variance because they have a non-conforming structure. In the unlikely event that you do approve this application, I would like to ask the board to explain how this regulation doesn't apply to this case. Also zoning reg 9.2.2.2 says that any variance approved must be the minimum for the reasonable use of the land or built. I don't know how anybody could possibly think that Gail's asking for the minimum when the house can be repaired or rebuilt at the same dimensions and lived in as it has been for the last eight years. The only hardship here is self-created. I want more living space and not the hardship that justifies granting variances. This is also the opinion of Judge Hiller. Two different Superior Court judges on two different occasions that overturned the board's approval of these variances. Please deny this application.
Can I ask you a question? How long, how long did you live in the, at the residence?
15 years, 14, 15 years?
15?
Yeah.
So when you came there, these people were already living there, correct?
No, Basil, Basil hasn't, I don't even know if Basil.
But they said 17 years.
Gail, Gail was there, but Basil, I don't even know. Basil wasn't living there when he was here.
I'm just trying to determine, you know, who was there first.
Gail, Gail was there first and then we bought the house in 99. I moved in in 2000. And Basil was there, came away, but never, never actually lived there.
Thank you. Anyone else? opposed?
My name is Dick Jimbowski.
Say your name again, Sigwin. You were approaching us and saying your name again.
Okay, Sigwin Bonsi. C D I G N I E W. C D I G N I E W. Last name, Bonsi, T N O W S K I.
Can you spell your last name again, please?
T N O W S K I. That's about a 30 share on the board shelf. We argue with our neighbors at 35 Thompson who wants to do a property. We don't have a problem with. Um, sorry.
Lift it up, you can lift it up.
Okay, we don't like what they're planning to do at 35 Thompson. We live next, we have the property next door, which we plan to retire to. We have no problem with a reasonable sized home. Our biggest complaint, especially if it's on the original footprint, is that three stories. Just two stories. And then we don't quite understand, people that are retiring, are getting out in years, they usually move from a two-story home to a single floor because it's hard to get around. So, but I, I do hope they build something there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Okay, Mr. Grant, you can read by either, either or both.
Well, to start off, obviously, as we talked about earlier, we're not here for a height variance. The non-conformities here have to do with the side and front, rear yard setbacks. They are no different, you know, the proposed structure than the existing structure. In fact, they're decreased. And so I understand that some of the former neighbors that came up here have taken the case to court. But I don't think it's fair to say that that court case says, they suggested that this board must deny any and all variances. The court couldn't say that, in fact, it didn't say that. It said on that earlier application, which is substantially legally different from this application, that as the court saw, that application was improperly approved. As I said, we have tried to learn from that. We have eliminated the increase in non-conformity 100%. We have sighted the property this time, which is different from last time, exactly on the existing footprint. I would ask the board that, that they move forward with this application this time and, and Grant, Ms. Murray and Mr. Young, the application they gave for you. Thank you.
Thank you, I have a question.
I have a question. I'd honestly prefer to grant the variances, but I have a problem. I just read Judge Hiller's decision and I believe it says, correct me if I'm wrong, that the hardship would be if they couldn't rebuild a residence. But the fact that they want to build a bigger residence is not a hardship. And I know that's a bad application, but how does that not apply to this application?
Again, I think the difference between that application and that decision and this one is that that application, as it was said on the property, was in a place that's different from the existing footprint and therefore had the impact of creating increased non-conformities as they existed.
But then it goes on and it cites a case that specifically says, "The need for repairs and the desire for a larger living space are not legally sufficient hardships that warrant granting a variance." And my, my concern is, and again, I prefer to grant these variances, but it seems like if we do, it's just going to get overturned again at the expense of the neighbors that have to fight this in court. So I guess what I'm asking is, what could you say to convince the other ones?
What I, what I can say here with respect to this application is that it, it does not have the impact that the prior application had. It is substantially different. Our rules, and frankly, we thought when we came in with the exact footprint application, that we would not want to need a variance. The shape of this property and the operation of the Milford walls would deny the ability to renovate this house. It can't be done. A trapezoidal thing was presented to you. If you were to deny this application, effectively saying that any time you would ask them to renovate their house in excess of 50%, which is what it now means, you would be forcing them to build on that odd thing that you already saw. We're beginning to bump up close to something that is akin to a reverse condemnation. The operation of our walls, the shape of this property, the existing footprint of the house converge here to create a hardship. And I think that that would be the difference from what we had last time with, with the judge. This is a different set of circumstances.
You also, okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Grant, do you want to say something?
I'm amplifying, here, Grant, I'm amplifying on that remark. I don't know, maybe it's implied that it's the same size as before. But I'll reemphasize, this is back to the same size, 161 square feet as the original shelf. The early proposal, a home, a watchtower, a home, a go-up. This is not that huge. It's going to stay on the same footprint, but very minor setback changes that will slightly decrease the amount of request. The other thing I heard that somehow having a three-story home on Thompson Street was an anathema. Well, I took the time to go down the street and look and trust me, there are at least four or five single fam, you know, single family, I'll say single family, three-story homes. They're all frontage homes and they all look to me as if they are conformance with the side yard setbacks. So what I'm saying is, you have a frontage home, a home, a home, just like Dominos, going down the street. This is a rear home. It's 50 feet in the rear of this home. It's 50 feet in the rear of this home that's in the front yard there on the street, a Pharmasimco property. So we talk about privacy, this three-story home is further away from its neighbors than all the other three-story homes, and they're ironically conforming that are frontage houses on the street. So I just want you to think that there's something wrong about a character here because the home is three stories. It's allowed, the height is allowed, and they're existing on the street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions? Okay. We had our opposition, we had our other self.
We'd like to speak on a comment that was made by...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm reflection, I think there's a need to recognize this.
Okay, she's here on the floor.
What are your thoughts?
I think this board's turning me into a libertarian because I would like to grant the variances and I think they should be granted. And if the people were in opposition, I'd probably vote in favor of the variances, but there are people in opposition and I think with that in mind, we have to pay close attention to what the law says. And while the application may be different, I think Judge Hiller's legal principles still apply and that is, there is no hardship given the fact that they simply want a bigger house than the one that they could build as a matter of right. And as unfortunate as that is, I would hate to grant them variances only to have what's happened already twice, happen a third time, and that's for a Superior Court judge to overturn us. And I would see anything different in this application than in the first two, as I read Judge Hiller's decision. So it's unfortunate, but I think the law is the law and that for those reasons, I am against the variances.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I agree with everything you said and I'm against them also.
Okay, we need a motion. Any other comments? We need a motion.
I think motion to deny.
About second. I'm being reasoned for denying that. There is a hardship. Okay, you have a motion to deny. You have a second on the motion, Mr. Duwa?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Bazian?
With the motion.
Mr. Gette?
With the motion.
Mr. Sodha?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Sorry, it's the...
Okay. What do we have to do business? Do you need witnesses? Okay. Old business? No comments?
Do you want to give a status on Roselle?
Um, I may mention this, maybe it's an update on Roselle.
Okay, I think they're alive and they're making a lot of progress, so the fact that they postponed for this one is probably good, which means, and we probably expect them to be in compliance by, by next month for sure.
Okay, so maybe they...
Yeah, we may make progress and hopefully get that back.
So maybe they'll wait, okay. Staff update, you can, they go on? No. Okay, acceptance of the minutes from February 13th.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
What, what is this, I'm going to hold this, this is...
The minutes? Did you just mention the minutes?
Yes, that's right, go ahead.
Okay, page three, third paragraph, please correct my name. Mr. Sodha, motion to approve that paragraph? Miss Huber hyphen H should be also.
Okay, so correction of the minutes would be...
Change the name.
The way your name was, was typed in.
Right, in the third paragraph on page three, in the second line of the third paragraph, please correct the spelling of my name from Happen to Miss Jean, J-E-A-N, Huber, H-U-B-E-R, type in Happen, J-E-A-N.
Thank you. It's a learning process for us. Anything else? Any other?
So we need approval of the minutes over the management.
Anyone? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The applications for next month, we have Clinton Street that will be back, possibly Roselle. Anything else going on? No. Okay, great. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The applications for next month, we have Clinton Street that will be back, possibly Roselle. Anything else going on? No. Okay, great. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In favor?
Aye.
It's meeting adjourned.